Sorry, unmute. All right. Sorry about that. All right. I'd like to call the Stillwater Planning Commission Special Meeting of number 302020 to order. And just a little bit of preliminary, since we do have a number of people who are going to want to be speaking this evening, we would ask that each speaker or presents for or against during the public hearing period to limit that to five minutes or less. And if you can, if an issue's been brought up, or they said, hey, duh-duh, don't just reiterate the same thing again and again, if possible, just so we get everybody's views and all the different opinions and matters on that. I was just briefly speaking to the city attorney, and should the planning commission want to go ahead and take up our preliminary plat, which is now listed as C in the agenda? If we would like to do that first, while we're all sort of here and fresh, we need a motion to do that, to take up the preliminary plat revised first. Do I have a motion to do that?
No move.
Second.
All right. Chelsea, were you able to pick up that motion and second?
Yes, yes.
Perfect. You'd like to take a vote?
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Durham?
Yes.
Mr. O'Red.
Yes.
Excellent. It looks like that the motion to go ahead and take up the preliminary plat first passed five to zero. So I know city staff, that means you're gonna have to scramble briefly to get that queued up. But if we can go ahead and begin then with the preliminary plat revised, S U B 19-23, requesting reconsideration of preliminary plat to create 131 residential lots and three outlots and property currently addressed as 1798 North Payne Street, the residential, single-family, small lot, RSS.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ryan Harkins, Community Development. We try and get the full screen here. So this is a request that staff received, similar to other applications that staff receives and processes, but out of obligation. This is a request to reconsider the preliminary plat for Skyline East. As you may recall, the area in question is within the hatch pattern here. So this is off of Jardoe and Sunrise on the northeast side of town. The area inside the polygon here is the general area. You'll notice Stillwater Junior High, and just to the east off this aerial is Sunrise Elementary, or Skyline Elementary. But this is the proposed plat that they have submitted with this request to reconsider. 131 lots, three outlots. The applicant and their agent are here and can walk through the changes that they are asking for. With that, staff would stand for any questions you might have.
Sorry. Do we have any questions for staff from the commission? Seeing none, then I will go ahead and we will open the public hearing by hearing from the applicant and/or representative. Obviously, leave your name and address, all that stuff.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Stephen Gose with Gose and Associates, 113 East 8th, here on behalf of the applicant seeking approval of this preliminary plat. As Ryan mentioned, it's 131 lots. There are two points of access proposed, one in the northwest corner at Crayler and Skyline, another one on Payne South. There were stubs at both of these locations with previous work in the area. So both, the development will be in two phases, the south half and the west lots. So both access points will be part of Phase 1, and then Phase 2 will be completing the rest of the lots in the interior. This does take into consideration two of the three conditional approvals from the previous approval. One is the removal of Moore to make it a pedestrian access. The second is Grand View over in East Ridge. That road is complete and will be open prior to Phase 2 of this. We have discussed the neighborhood's request for a road out to Jardoe from the subdivision. We've got a traffic impact study that we've discussed at length previously that shows the plat as presented with the access to the west and the south. There's sufficient capacity. We don't affect the level of service on any of the intersections and roads. I know from a school zone at Sunrise and Skyline, it's currently controlled today as a four-way stop with proper markings for the crosswalks to allow kids. The traffic study has been done in consultation and approved by the city engineering staff as with the layout as presented. So with that, and I know city engineering was supposed to be here tonight, too, to talk about, give their discussion of the traffic study, but I don't know if Monty's online, or they're trying to get ahold of them. So I guess I will answer any questions at the end of the public hearing.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of the item? Please come forward, give your information.
Roger Gose, I don't want to burn my chance to talk, but Monty just called in. He can't get his mic unmuted, so if there are questions for him, we can call him on his office cellphone, and he will address them. And I think Lance is out trying to figure out how to fix it. So just as point of information, that's what's going on as far as asking Monty something.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll go ahead, and anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item, I believe. Paula, you have a list that you'll work from. I will then defer that over so we get the people in the proper order. And again, we just ask that each person try to keep your comments in five minutes and not cover the same things so that we can get through the list of people. And so I'll let you go from there, and then some will get the rest of the people in the queue as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners, Paula Dennison, Assistant City Manager. We have established the overflow area for this planning commission meeting at the library. And as of right at this moment, I have two individuals who wish to speak. First is Matthew Wyckoff, and second will be Leslie Meyer. So I'm going to turn the Zoom over to Mr. Wyckoff.
Hello. Matthew Wyckoff here. I live at 1824 East Sunrise Avenue, right there at the intersection of Payne and Sunrise. So I am very, very, very close. This development is directly north of my house. And all I can say is that I don't really trust this developer, mainly because no matter what he says, he has not been able to come through on any of the promises that he has said that he would make. Whether or not it's his fault is irrelevant. He made the claims. So I don't know what else to say. I mean, even my driveway that he cut on August 17th took into the second week of October for him to come back to repair, to restore. And it is not restored to its original state. He even met me the week before coming out to do it, as was a good thing. And he reiterated at that point that he was going to have to make a new cut line above where the original cut line was because of chip out done when the excavation was done, and then the water line laid through. That was not accomplished. It was not repaired. Those chips are still there. He did not leave caution tape up for 48 hours. So Friday morning, this was done on a Wednesday, the concrete was poured on a Wednesday, Friday morning, people were turning around on my driveway. So even if he used the two-day quick cure concrete that he was talking about, that was not a full two-day cure. So if damage was done underneath the surface, that may not even show up within a year or two. So I don't know what options I have at this point, but I can't trust anything that this man said. He does not come through on his promise, on what he even states himself is going to be done. So he cuts corners. He doesn't do a good job, in my opinion, because I have proof. You can come by my driveway anytime you want and look at what he left. I don't know what else to say about this. I know that other people are going to cover the main points, but he's wanting to put all of the traffic into the school zone, all of the traffic, in a school zone that's already overloaded with students. And that does not, the projections do not show that it's coming down in the future. He is willing to cut corners. He is willing to put the lives of those kids going to those schools at more risk by pushing more traffic into that school zone, both of the schools. I don't know what else to say about this. I mean, it's, it's... I just don't feel that it's right, and that's my whole thing. He doesn't do the right thing. Whether or not it's up to code is not the relevant aspect. It's whether or not, when you look at a situation, whether or not it's right to do that. And he's not doing the right thing. And I can show you physically, and I have other pictures and things that he's done that just set me off. But physically, I can show you what he did to my driveway, and it took him two months to do it. Because of these things that he's done, we actually have new codes, new ordinances on the codes to help alleviate with this type of situation in the future. But that doesn't help me at this point, and it shows that he's willing to do the barest minimum work to get what he wants out of the property. Not the right thing. Thank you.
Okay, and now I will ask Ms. Leslie Meyer.
Hello, my name is Leslie Meyer, and I live at 1102 North Payne Street. I want to start by expressing my appreciation to the commissioners for your service to the city of Stillwater. This is the fourth time that I have spoken before the commission concerning Skyline East. I began my comments on the evening of February 4th by saying, quote, "Since the fall of 2011 and the proposal of Aspen Heights, this is the third time that citizens in northeast Stillwater have had to come together, mount a defense, and plead our case before the planning commission and the city council in an attempt to protect our investments and maintain the safety and integrity of our neighborhood." Literally, hundreds of man-hours and hundreds of dollars have been spent by ordinary citizens in our area to defend what we hold dear. And here we are again. To be honest, I am beyond frustrated that it is necessary to be here tonight. Buried in the discussion section of the report from Development Services to the Planning Commission concerning this request is the primary reason that we are here tonight. The developer does not want to pay for the condition that was imposed by the planning commission in order for the development to move forward. The report also references other perceived issues raised by the developer supporting the request to reconsider the preliminary plat and approve it without access to Jardoe being required. It is my assumption that one of the other perceived issues could have to do with drainage problems that materialize after the runoff associated with heavy rains received this summer. That could explain the change from 132 homes and two outlots on the original plat to the current plan for 131 homes and three outlot. I realize that my assumption may be incorrect, but the fact is that a neighbor's beautiful pond will never be the same because of the runoff from this construction site. The drainage issue is a serious concern to area residents because many have lived here for decades and witnessed firsthand what happens in extreme weather events. These conditions were raised repeatedly before any construction began on this property. In the same vein, area residents witnessed firsthand the traffic and safety issues that already exist in our neighborhoods and school zones before 131 new households are introduced to the immediate area. New development is being pursued in several locations around Stillwater. How many junior high students will be added? All of them will be transported to this location daily during the school year. The vacant property bordered by Lakeview, Grand View, and Crayler will be developed at some point. With its proximity to Skyline Elementary and the junior high, how many additional students will be walking to school along Crayler when this property is developed? The potential for additional traffic and safety problems is not only possible, it is probable. A long-term solution should not be based on a snapshot of what is, but on what is to come. The relief valve in the form of brook extended to Jardoe needs to be implemented now. This condition was required by the planning commission and understood by the developer prior to the beginning of construction. It is in the best interest of the families who will buy the homes that he builds, as well as the surrounding neighborhoods, and anyone who has students attending Skyline and the junior high. Once Skyline East is completed, the developer will move on to another project, and the residents of northeast Stillwater, as well as parents of junior high students all over Stillwater, will be left to deal with the traffic and safety impact from now on. Please uphold the decision that was made in March after weeks of input, negotiations, and public meetings. Thank you for hearing my comment.
Mr. Chairman, that's all of the individuals that we have signed up to speak here from the library.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you for your help. So of those who are in Zoom wanting to speak, how do we want to handle having them speak up? Do we want, just have individuals just unmute? That be the easiest? It's very hard for me. I know there's people out there. It's trying to figure out how to... Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition that's on Zoom right now? And I think just unmute, and we'll just do the best we can with that.
We are in council chambers, and I believe we have three people that would like to speak.
Okay, great, great.
We'll start with Simon.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I would ask for one extra minute. I've rehearsed this many times. I've got it to about 5 minutes 20 seconds.
Do the best you can, please.
Thank you. And can you see my PowerPoint, commissioners?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. On February 18th, the planning commission approved a plat for Skyline East on three conditions. One of those conditions was an access road to Jardoe. Now, the developer does not want to pay for that road. They claim it's not needed based on the traffic analysis that was done by Lee Engineering. On this map, you can see the locations where traffic was measured. The study concluded that Skyline East would not cause a noticeable increase in traffic at these particular locations. But we're not interested in how Skyline East would affect traffic at Lakeview and Perkins, or Jardoe and McElroy. The traffic study did not measure any of the traffic closest to Skyline East, and it certainly did not look at pedestrian foot traffic. Look at those two yellow squares. That's Skyline Elementary and the junior high. Superintendent Moore stated before the planning commission in February that Skyline is a neighborhood school, which means more students walk to the building compared to nearly every other school in town. And for those whose parents drive them, a large number come from inside the area bounded by Lakeview, Jardoe, and McElroy. None of this was measured by the traffic study. The key streets in this discussion are Crayler, Sunrise, and Skyline. The junior high is the only junior high in town, which means parents and buses drive from all across Stillwater to get here. As a result, Skyline Street is packed with vehicles during pickup and drop-off times. Here's a closer look at the area. On the left are the elementary and junior high schools, and on the right is an artist's rendering of what Skyline East would look like when it's fully built. The blue dots are the two access points the developer wants to have, one at Crayler and one exiting on Payne to Sunrise. And the yellow lines show roads that are school zones. Note that at those two access points proposed by the developer, all traffic coming and going from Skyline East goes directly into a school zone. The red dot is the only location in this entire map where traffic was measured by the study. The developer wants these blue dots to be the only way to get in and out of Skyline East. Now, I'd like to show you what these blue dots look like when school is in session. This is Crayler when the junior high lets out. It's completely clogged during pickup and drop-off. Skyline East will have 131 homes. None of those residents will get very far using this access point in the morning and afternoon. The junior high is adding a paved roadway for buses on the west side of school, but it's not for cars, and it's going to do little to improve the scene that you see here. You don't need a traffic study from Oklahoma City to tell you that this is a bad idea. Now, let's look at the other proposed access point to Skyline East, Sunrise and Payne. The intersection behind this bus is that access point. Sunrise is not standard width. It's 20 feet, 1 inch wide, and has no curves. It's so narrow that two cars can't pass by each other without one going into the grass, and you can see tire tracks on the right side of the road as evidence. This street is not even equipped to handle the current volume of traffic, especially during pickup and drop-off times. And Skyline East, without Jardoe, would only make the situation worse. The solution here is simple, and it was already required by planning commission eight months ago. Build a road from Skyline East to Jardoe. Here you can see what it would look like with such a road. This one road solves all these problems. It lets people get in and out of Skyline East without going through school zones. Cars entering and exiting here will not be putting kids who walk to school at risk. It would allow ambulances, fire trucks, trash recycling vehicles to come and go without traveling through neighborhood streets. And this road has already been built. It's not paved, but gravel was put in this spring, and it's been used daily by construction vehicles. But now, after months of using this road, the developer says they don't want it, because paving it would be too expensive. The developer knew, before construction began in April, that this road would be required, and they knew they would have to pay for it. There was never an expectation that the city would share the cost of building it. And on September 14th, the city council unanimously voted to deny their request to share the cost of the road. At this city council meeting, Monty Carnes had this to say about the developer's request to share the cost of building the road. Quote, "We're concerned about a precedent this might set. If a future developer doesn't like or agree with what the planning commission or city councils has required, they come in and say this isn't in our budget, and they want the city to participate." Clearly, the ordinance states that these are the developer's costs to bear. And now we find ourselves right back here again, debating the same thing that was brought before planning commission on January 7th, February 4th, and February 18th. Nothing has changed. But now the developer wants to back out of the original agreement. According to documents filed for this meeting by the developer, they would like to do another traffic study. Well, when exactly is this traffic study going to be done? During the pandemic? You'd have to wait until next August, when school starts, to collect accurate data. Traffic has been studied. The plat was approved. On the condition that Jardoe access be added, it's time to move on. The thing is, we could do 20 traffic studies. They would not change this simple fact. Skyline East, without direct access to Jardoe, means every car that enters and exits the development will go through school zones. Another traffic study is not going to make those school zones suddenly disappear. This was one of the reasons the planning commission required Jardoe access back in February. The road has been built and used daily. It just needs to be paved. And I remind you, the developer was fully aware of the cost of building this road before beginning construction, and work proceeded anyway. Now, if the developer can't afford to pay for the road, it's their problem, not the city's. Please vote no, and uphold the decision that was already made. Do not let Skyline East be built unless it has access to Jardoe. Thank you very much.
You very much.
Okay, the next speaker on the list is Bart Douglas.
Hi. Hi. My name is Bart Douglas. I'm at 1523 Skyline. I'm right at the corner of Skyline and Sunrise. I'm not going to beat it to death. Obviously, the traffic is bad there, and it's, I don't think the traffic study did, you know, where it needed to be. And I think one of the days was even like Martin Luther King Day, you know? Nobody's even there. But I think that's what I remember seeing. I didn't bring anything with me. But anyway, I've lived within that area for 15 years. I've always lived in northeast side of town. And until I bought that house, I didn't even realize how bad the traffic was on Skyline and Sunrise. And it's amazing. I mean, it happens all days, all days of the time and night, and it's, you know, it's an ongoing thing. And, you know, everybody else has brought up the other points, too. The road's not wide enough, and I've had people parking in my yards to pick up their kids while I was putting concrete blocks in the grass. You know, so then you damn, really can't pass, you know, two cars, because there's a bus, and a car in the street, and a half in and half out of the street. And anyway, that's my point on it. And I was really happy when I thought there was going to be a road out to Jardoe, and I just kind of hope we could still do something like that. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
And that's all that we have here.
Okay. Is there anyone in the Zoom world or out there that is wanting to do so of the people that are not seeing any one per se? All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the item? Anyone else wishing to speak opposition? Okay. I'm not hearing one. Well, I guess we'll then close the public hearing. We'll ask for staff's alternatives and perhaps have some comment back from the applicant. But anyway.
Okay, so at this point, you're... I've heard all the testimony. Staff can tell you right now what they have proposed meets subdivision and zoning requirements. The land development code requires that subdivisions that have 30 or more lots are required to have two points of access at a minimum. Comprehensive plan does recommend low-density residential in this area. Currently, the land uses are a mix of residential, ag, and warehousing. You can see that when you drive by. You can see that looking off aerial. The proposed density is in alignment with the RSS zoning district, which is in this area. Having said that, you can accept the findings and recommend approval as presented. You can recommend approval with conditions if you feel those conditions are appropriate. You can find the request is not appropriate and recommend denial. But if you also feel that there is additional discussion or information that is needed, you can table the item to a particular date certain. Having said that, do you have questions about the alternatives or findings?
Questions from the committee regarding not seeing any per se? So we normally then would be time for discussion among the commissioners? Or a motion?
Chair, I believe that the applicant said he would be available for questions?
Chair, I believe that the applicant said he would be available for questions.
Yes. Is that the case?
Yes, I have a, I do have a question for the applicant.
Yeah, this is Stephen Goos. I'm here.
My question is, the parcel of land that has this Brook Street from the proposed development to Jardo, it was not included in the original plat yet now that access is made available. Is that under the ownership of the developer at this time?
I'm not sure of the exact ownership, but I know there's an agreement to allow construction access through there and storage of excess soil material from the excavation that's happened on site. The exact ownership, I'm not completely sure of.
Okay. So you wouldn't know if that was owned by the developer or if there's some kind of...
At the time, earlier in the year, when the conditional approval was made, it was not owned or controlled or any agreements in place. Those were put in place after Planning Commission, and a lot of it trying to get construction off of, out of the neighborhood streets, allowing this construction, the heavy, heavy work to come in in the back.
Thank you. The only question I have.
Any other questions since we're there or any comments among the commissioner?
I have a few thoughts. Mr. Chair, if I may. Looking a little bit at maybe a broader picture as to perhaps some of the thoughts on this. I understand, I'm the newcomer here, so I've been trying to do some homework to get up to speed. And in looking at a little bit broader picture, it looks like that maybe some items that are addressed in the comprehensive plan as well as the transportation enhancement plan might provide a little bit more information as to why this connection is a good idea. In referencing Chapter 5 of the comprehensive plan that pertains to infrastructure, looking at a comment there on local streets, it notes that local streets should be designed for low-speed traffic on an emphasis on providing access. This connection to Jardo could be that provide that access to the major arterial. Also, if looking at Chapter 2 of the Transportation Enhancement Plan, it talks about primary function of local streets is to provide access so that traffics, the travel speeds and traffic volumes are low and travel distances on local streets are short. It certainly seems that this Brook Street access would provide that function. Looking a little bit more, also, Chapter 2, back in the comprehensive plan, looking a little bit at safety, because that was one of the topics that a lot of the people who spoke tonight touched on, as well as the over 30-plus emails that I, as well as I'm sure the other commissioners have received, safety was definitely the top priority. Again, referencing Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 2, talking about ensuring that new development patterns should facilitate safety and promoting street patterns that provide maximum safety and mobility for all modes of transportation while preserving neighborhood integrity. I certainly think that this addition, this additional street of Brook from this development to Jardo would be in keeping with that mantra. This section also talked a little bit about the other, the other street that's been made to be a pedestrian-only access. That was also a requirement that was mentioned in the earlier approval recommendation from Commission to the City Council. That has not come up today, but that's certainly in keeping with the comprehensive plan. So I am of the belief that certainly the spirit of the comprehensive plan is part of this. Those are just some of my thoughts as to perhaps how we've gotten to where we are.
Thank you very much. That's excellent. Any other comments from the planning commissioners?
I have a question for the city or for Monty. What is, as far as the city is concerned, what's their desire for the connection to Jardo Street?
Is Monty available at this point? Were they...
Monty's here now. I'm sorry. I'm sorry that we had the issues earlier. I'm one staff person, and so I'm one of a lot of people that make input into decision. I agree with the, I agree with the traffic engineering study. I've been on record as saying that. That doesn't mean that I don't recognize that, you know, that there's going to be an increase in traffic. I just agree with the study that the existing system will handle it. With that said, as I said before, I'm one voice. I made that recommendation before, and then it's up to you guys and the, and City Council to weigh all the factors, not just what we believe, but in kind of decision, we support those decisions. So my view is still the same. My judgment's still the same, that I'm okay with the traffic study. Doesn't mean that I don't recognize the impacts. It's just that the system would be able to handle the additional impacts. And when you consider the whole and looking out into the future, I would rather have the traffic coming to Sunrise and over to Jardo as opposed directly to Jardo. But that's not to say that one's any better than the other. That's just my view. How about that for not being able to be definitive? But that would be, that'd be my position.
Commissioner Drum, did that help your question? Was that at least something in reply for you?
Yeah, that does. And the traffic study, the traffic study was done according to the guidelines set by the city. Is that correct?
Yes. And according to the International Traffic Engineering or the Institute of Traffic Engineers, according to their guidelines as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Other discussion or comments from commissioners?
This is Commissioner Shanahan. I agree with Commissioner Phillips' comments regarding the comprehensive plan and how it relates to this development. I think that one of the citizens, Anthony Shores, did a very good job in an email outlining these similar points that Commissioner Phillips made. I also think that perhaps the traffic study was made in accordance with guidelines, but I also think that that traffic study is fundamentally flawed in reflecting the lived experience of the neighborhood and also the future experience of the neighborhood. I also would like to know, was that traffic study, if I remember correctly, was that commissioned by the developer or was that commissioned by the city?
I think it's the developer's responsibility, but I don't know that staff may be able to help us with that question.
That was something the developer did at this stage to help illustrate their views on the traffic patterns related to this development. Normally, the traffic impact analysis is required when the final plat is submitted, but they did it in advance at this point in time.
Well, I tend to question the objectivity of the traffic study, given the source of the commission. I don't see that anything's changed since we made, we, the Planning Commission, made our determination in the February 18th meeting. I haven't heard anything to convince me otherwise. I do not think that we should approve a plat that is trying to renege on a commitment that was made at that meeting for the ingress egress to Jardo and the pedestrian access on more. I don't want to see the city continually having to bear social costs for private profit.
Other commissioners?
Right. Yeah, so I'd just like to make a comment to the citizens. We have heard from, I lost count. I mean, it's probably every single person in the neighborhood, it seems like. Thank you very much to all of you for reaching out, your voice. You guys have spoken, your voice is heard, and we will certainly take all of those into our consideration for tonight. And so I commend each and every one of you for taking time to reach out to us. That is part of the democratic process, and I wish more citizens would do that. So thank you to the neighbors who have expressed your opinion. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, but I certainly appreciate you taking the time to tell us how you feel. So thank you very much for doing that.
I'll say.
Well, I'd like to make one more comment to embellish on what the commissioner just said. I think the level of engagement of the citizens is something not only to be encouraged, but to be grateful that they are doing this. It's just not that they were speaking their mind. They also did an inordinate amount of research, very detailed level of research, making their case. These are just not opinions. They're very considered, documented opinions. And I think both this, the engagement of this part of the community and the engagement we've seen in similar instances such as the Westwood overlay is a very encouraging development in the city of Stillwater.
Good. Is there any other questions or comments that, from the commissioners in it? And if not, we have motions.
Mr. Chair, can I speak?
This is Commissioner Phillips. I was just gonna say I echo the comments made by Commissioner Allred and Ms. Shanahan. Appreciate all of the neighborhood really letting us know how they felt, and it was fairly objective, and I really do appreciate that. So thank you.
Good.
Madam Attorney, what can we, can we not participate or respond to questions and allegations?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? My name is Bethany A. Childs. I'm serving as special counsel for the city of Stillwater on this matter. If you wanted to give the applicants representative an opportunity to address a couple of the concerns with the set period of time, I don't know that there would be any harm in doing that.
Okay. If you, sir, if you'd like to make any response, but realize that you can't respond to any of the open questions or additional information, we're not getting into this and going back and forth about, you know, they did this or that's this. But if you have something you'd like to add, go ahead.
I'd like to defend my profession and the process that we've gone through with regard to the TIA being characterized as fundamentally flawed. It's the developer's onus to provide a traffic impact study with a development at the final plat process. We, at the request of the Planning Commission and in conjunction with the developer, prepared the traffic impact analysis with the preliminary plat to aid in these discussions. We talked with city engineering staff prior to preparation of the scope and the study to clearly define what was expected to analyze and look at. That report was reviewed by the city engineer and approved. So saying it's fundamentally flawed, engineers don't know what they're looking at. We followed the guidelines. We followed the process. We looked at what needed to be looked at. The streets, local streets are meant to handle local traffic. Small backups can be expected on those. Collectors, Sunrise is a collector, to go to Monty's point about getting traffic to Sunrise to Jardo, that is the point of Sunrise. And so that's, that's, I guess, my statement in regard to that, that comment about the traffic study.
Right. Very well. Commissioners? We have a motion. We have something, unless there's any comments.
Hold on. On behalf of the developer, Sunrise keeps getting misrepresented. I mean, it's represented, it's a safety problem. It is. The city of Stillwater paved that thing at 20 feet, 1 inch wide. Doesn't meet any standards. It ought to be on the neighborhood or the city to make that street safe. It's already not safe. You shouldn't have a developer try to come in and y'all say, well, here's the white knight. We'll make him fix it, which you're not asking for Sunrise, but Sunrise keeps coming up as a safety issue. I think Stephen covered the traffic impact study and the allegations that engineers don't know what they're doing just goes all over me, especially from a planning commissioner who's not trained in that field.
We, we will, to progress, we must come up with at least one of those three alternatives. If we can't make a decision this evening, then we're going to have to, which I like the one that says, to ask for additional information, or we reject, or we accept. Those are our three options, and we must come up with at least one of those for us to progress this evening.
Oh, Chair, if I may ask, or just kind of maybe talk through some possibilities about this. What I'm seeing here is the findings are, it says, "Accept the findings and recommend to approve the proposed plat," which is not the same plat that was previously approved and has the connection of Brook. It also says in, another alternative, alternative two is to find that the plat's not appropriate use of the property. It appears that this plat, in my opinion, is an appropriate use of the property. But I think that the next bit of that alternative there states that based on impact to the surrounding vicinity. I think that that's the proper use. I think it's the impact to the vicinity that is kind of where we're hung up. And as I mentioned previously, I think if we look at the overlay of the comprehensive plan and the transportation enhancement plan and look at what was decided previously and recommended by this body to the City Council to have the connection of Brook from this development to Jardo, I think that I would want to uphold the previous approval. So whether that, if that's item three, and that's where we need to request that additional information, that we see a plat that reflects that, then that would be my motion. So I guess my question is probably back to staff. Is it item three where we want additional information to show a plat that shows the connection?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here if I could for a second, Ryan. I hope I'm not speaking over staff. But my, my recommendation and my thought is, if you are interested in a conditional approval of this plat, you have the ability to do that with any specific recommended changes. And I'm looking at the planning manager, and he's nodding his head yes. So the motion could be to approve the preliminary plat with the condition that the Jardo construction, or the connection to Jardo is reflected on the documents submitted back to staff. is reflected on the documents submitted back to staff.
Do we have to give a reason to that to say, you know, based on X, Y, Z? Or can you just state it as that?
I think that having handled some of these matters before, my recommendation would probably, might be for you to make the motion for the, if that, if that's the direction you all elect to go, to make the recommendation of a conditional passage with the Jardoe connection being constructed or identified on the plat. And then I would probably follow that up with a subsequent identification as voted on by the planning commission of the, the areas of the comprehensive plan and the code that you feel like aren't being met. And then last but not least, if you elect to go in this direction, I think there should probably be a third motion that would instruct staff to draft a letter to the applicant identifying the reasons noted by the planning commission. So, clarism, hopefully that's helped you find that guidance helpful.
All right.
And I believe, Jana, I'm not, I'm not positive that there has been a preliminary plat presented with Brook to Jardoe.
Okay.
Am I correct in that, saying that, or no?
All we have in front of us is the proposed plat that they have presented. We can, if we vary from it, we, we have to just note it as such that that's been changed. That we want something different than what they presented. But all they've given us is what we have here, which just has the two, the two entrances.
But we don't have a preliminary with Brook to Jardoe.
Right. We do not have a preliminary with Brook. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, just taking some notes to myself. Previous conversation.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a stab at a motion here.
Okay.
I would like to make a conditional approval of accepting the plat with the connection from the development, proposed development to Jardoe as previously found by this commissioner. And I would cite the backup for that to be the items that I mentioned in the comprehensive plan and the transportation enhancement.
A motion for approval of the preliminary plat with the connection, the, we'll call it the Brook connection to Jardoe, based on your comments previously with regard to the comprehensive plan, which, did we give a specific statement there? It's probably sufficient in what you said, but you didn't make that into that.
I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to take council's recommendation and think maybe if we make the motion to approve the plat conditional on the connection and then we might address the other.
And then do a second one and then do another and another. Okay, understood. Do, do the other commissioners understand what the motion was there?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded to provide approval of the plat with the condition of the Brook to Jardoe. And seconded, I believe that is fairly well, fairly, I think I captured it correctly. I'm sorry. All right.
Mr. Rickelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Jerome?
No.
Mr. Allred?
No.
Three yes, two no.
Three yes is, three, is it, it passes with three, so three yes and two no. So, that motion passes. So, right? The correct, sir? Just see more people coming in.
Still on Bethany, Ms. Childs.
All right. Okay, so next, right? Three was sufficient for, for passage there. So, we now need another motion to give our reasons thereof for approval or why we added that additional condition.
May I, may I interject for one second?
Certainly, of course.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, I regrettably have to do this. Today is election day. This is, today is my professional career as a political consultant. I have many candidates and watch parties and election returns to go tend to. So, you'll have to excuse me. I apologize. I, this is, I stayed as long as I could and I sincerely apologize. So, please forgive me. Enjoy the rest of your meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you for staying a little extra. I know you were trying to get out earlier. Sorry about that. Okay, so we still need to come up, we were, as we were saying, we would come up with some reference thereof towards why we added the additional condition to the previous motion.
I would, I would just say that referencing comprehensive plan in chapter two, where it addresses goals and guiding principles, particularly the portion that promotes street patterns to provide maximum safety and mobility and provide a greater connectivity between different neighborhoods. We want to ensure a new development patterns that facilitate safety, connectivity and mobility.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
All right. I won't try to pretend to get that correct, but I think the minutes in the record can show the reason therefore given for that motion and it's been moved and seconded. So, we will now vote.
Mr. Rickelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Jerome?
No.
The motion passes three yes to one no. And the final point that the attorney, city attorney made was a motion to instruct the staff to send a letter clarifying the reasons thereof and all sending those to the developer at that point.
Do you need that in a motion as well?
I, I think that's what she was saying, yes. Just so that it, so that staff, city staff knows that we're directing them to do something.
That, that's right. It's, it's just a really good way to memorialize the action of the planning commission.
All right. My mic's open, so I'll just go ahead and continue forward. I'd like to move request to staff if they would please document the chapters of both the comprehensive plan and the transportation enhancement plan that I mentioned.
Do we have a second?
We can have a record of, of that.
I'll second Commissioner Phillips' motion.
Okay. Motion to instruct the staff to prepare a letter clarifying the reasons for our previous decision and sending those to the developer and it's been seconded.
Mr. Rickelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Jerome?
Yes.
The motion passes four to zero. With that, we will go on to the next item for the public hearing. Map amendment MA 20-05 requesting review and approval to rezone property addressed as 815, 817 and 823 North Jefferson and 924 West McElroy Road from residential two-family to residential two-family and multifamily to construct multiple principal structures on a lot at a higher density. City staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ryan Harkins, Community Development. So, this is a map amendment to rezone multiple properties generally at the intersection of North Jefferson and West McElroy. The subject properties are within the hatch pattern here on the screen. You can see Washington and McElroy and Jefferson, Tyler Monroe. So, this is generally between Jefferson and Washington Street. The aerial that you see here identifies the subject properties within that yellow boundary. So, you can see a church. You see Washington, McElroy. You see facility areas that have been built on as part of the OSU campus, including now where the new baseball stadium would be. This is the zoning map of the area, so you can see where the RT, the RTM, commercial shopping, RSS and RSL, which is small and large lot, single-family residential as well as other more multi and two-family residential districts are in relation to this property. You can see in this case, the RTM is immediately on the west side of Jefferson across the street. This is the future land use map. The area identified for this proposal is right here. It shows a low-density land use on the future land use map. And I do believe the agent for the applicant is here to speak regarding what they want to do with the subject property. With that, staff would stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions for city staff? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open for the public hearing. We have a representative or the, or agent thereof for the applicant. Please go ahead. We can't hear you.
Kelly, you need to unmute.
Got it.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry about that. This is Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering located at 923 South Lowry. Our client is looking to add some infill development on this property. The area has a wide range of housing options already from single-family to duplexes to small apartments. The owner would like to create a pocket neighborhood on this property. In order to do that, we need to be able to construct more than one principal structure on the property. In the current zoning classification of RT, that is not allowed. Even though it's not allowed, there are several properties within our development already using the multiple structures as separate living units. So, this request is just updating on how the property is currently being used. Our development would add several more small, single-family home structures to the property in a common grass area in the middle. Even though there are several properties involved in the development, we will be limited in the density allowed due to the small size of the property. This type of development appeals to a wide range of demographics from university students to retired folks that are moving back to Stillwater but want to be able to walk to university events. Again, the property is already being used as if it was zoned RTM and our request just reflects that use. I'm here to answer any questions as well as the owner as well.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and continue the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the item, please step forward, note forward through Zoom and your name and address for the record. Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for staff alternative.
Okay, so with this in mind, alternatives available to you presently involve findings such as these. The land development code currently allows for rezoning through the map amendment process. RTM is an adjacent zoning district and there are already properties across the street in that zoning classification. So, this would just be an extension of that. The map amendment will allow for multiple principal structures. That's not possible right now with that current zoning classification. It also allows for a higher density than what's currently allowed. The comp plan does call for low-density residential in this area. However, the way low-density and high-density residential are defined, low-density residential can have a number of possibilities. With that said, you can accept findings and recommend approval of the map amendment to city council. You can find that a lower, the request is not appropriate and recommend denial of this map amendment request. If you do feel there is additional information needed for this item or additional discussion, you can ask that it be tabled to a date certain and ask for additional information. With that said, are there questions about the findings and recommendations?
Are there any questions? All right. Any discussion among commissioners or a motion?
I move that we accept findings and recommend approval as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the findings and recommend approval. We will now vote.
Mr. Rickelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Jerome?
Yes.
The motion passes four yes to no, to, to zero no. No, no. Thank you all very much. The next item on the agenda is 2020 Investment Group Map Amendment MA 20-06, requesting review and approval to rezone property addressed as 908 East 12th Avenue from residential, single-family, small lot to residential, multifamily, urban district.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ryan Harkins, Community Development, again, this item has been requested, we will say upfront by the applicant, to be deferred to the next planning commission meeting on November 17th due to scheduling and logistics issues. We will tell you this is a request, as mentioned, for 908 East 12th. The area in question, or the subject property in this case, is in the hatch pattern. It is surrounded by a number of residential and public uses. The subject property is within the yellow here. You can see public park, swimming pool and residential structures adjacent to it. This is the zoning map. It shows RSS, the subject property again in the hatch pattern. And then that P is the public zoning. We use that for publicly owned properties like parks, recreation areas. Future land use map, in this case, shows a low-density land use category on the future land use map. Again, the applicant has asked for a deferment to the November 17th. Again, the applicant has asked for a deferment to the November 17th, 2020, meeting on this item. Any questions staff can answer?
I don't see any question for you. Do...
See, I've got a quick question on that. The structure that's on the property right now, can you explain what that is right now?
My understanding is previously it has served as a structure that housed some elderly, sort of elderly housing in the past. They are looking at using it for essentially a diversion type of program where people who could choose to go there rather than serving a sentence in jail for drug or alcohol-related offenses.
That was what I had thought, and it has been, seems like that it has been used as rental to multiple people since it's been a nursing home or whatever it was at the time for the elderly, but yet it is still zoned RSS, correct?
That is correct. It is zoned RSS. So in the RSS zoning, the only thing that currently is allowed is the traditional single-family detached structure. Hence, the request to rezone through the map amendment process to allow for something that might be more fitting or a use that would be available in that zoning classification.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to allow them to, or a motion to defer to the November 17th planning commission meeting on this issue? We don't have to accept it, but that was the request.
I move that we allow them to defer to the November 17th meeting.
It has been moved and seconded that we allow deferment until the meeting on November 17th. We will now vote.
Mr. Recaman?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Durham?
Yes.
The motion passes four yes to no, no's, to defer to November 17th. The next item on the agenda for public hearing, Sea Star Kitchen Services Preliminary Platte SUB 20-16, requesting review and approval of preliminary platte, create 16 residential lots for new multifamily development and a portion of property addressed as 401 South Sea Star Boulevard in the residential two-family and multifamily RTM district.
Okay, do you bear with me? We're going to try and get this. This PowerPoint does not seem to want to be cooperative at the moment. So with that said, this is a preliminary platte request that the applicant is trying to do on the west side of town. They are looking at a number of multifamily lots at full buildout. There we go. Okay, so subject property, you can see in the hatch pattern here, this is off of Sea Star and West Sixth Avenue. You can see Innovation Way near Meridian Campus. You can see Country Club. So, and overall, this is an area on, toward the west side of town. The subject property on this aerial is in the yellow polygon. So what you would see if you were driving along West Sixth would be a car wash, a flooring store, and a motel, and this would be just to the west of that motel. This is the proposed platte that they have submitted. The applicant is looking at a number of lots. You can see where each building would be located. The applicant is here to explain further their proposal and what they'd like to do. So with that, staff would stand for any questions you might have of us.
Any questions for staff?
Yes, staff, was there notation in staff notes regarding the location in a floodplain?
There was. We did discuss that with the applicant's engineer. We've noted that part of this, those lie in a floodplain, they are trying to, and they can talk to this as well, the fact that they're trying to locate the majority of the development outside of the floodplain, so the structures themselves would be situated out of the floodplain area. The remainder of the lots would be in the floodplain.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I was just curious if, is there a requirement for a fire turnaround?
So that was discussed during the review process. In this case, we've noted, engineering has looked at it, they felt like it was adequate. We reviewed, we normally give those, these applications to fire as well as part of the internal review process. They did not provide any comments requiring a turnaround and felt like what was there was adequate. So with that, we moved forward.
Okay, thank you.
I would also note that, and we included their request for the variances for the subdivision process as part of the staff report as an attachment. In order to do this, they're, they're asking for those variances at the time of preliminary platte approval. And they, again, can speak to each one of those.
All right. Any other questions for staff? All right, we'll go ahead and let's hear from the agent or representative thereof. Sir?
Good evening again, Commissioner Stephen Ghost with Ghost and Associates, here on behalf of Sea Star, asking for approval of this preliminary platte. It is eight buildings, 32 units there in the northwest corner of the Bourbon Street Square Development, as Ryan mentioned. This area was brought out of the floodplain years ago with a mass grading plan associated with the overall development. So the majority of this lot is outside the floodplain. There is a portion of it on the west side along the west property line. There's a common swale between this and Squire's Landing. We are proposing to subdivide, each building would be on a lot, each building has four units. It would be held in a property owners association for common maintenance of the drives, parkings, buildings, and all of that, but to allow investment by individuals to buy buildings that are then managed by a parent company to rent them out. The lots, each lot, like Lot 1 would be, have a 1A and 1B. The B portion would be in the floodplain west of that drive lane so that for insurance purposes, when they go to get a mortgage, they're only mortgaging the portion that's outside the floodplain and therefore don't have to get flood insurance if they choose not to. It's served by a common ingress egress easement that runs north-south on the west side of the buildings. There is a T turnaround between Lots 6 and 7 that complies with the fire code. That's been on the plan from day one. One, to meet fire code, two, to provide a place for trash trucks and, and other service vehicles to turn around. Utilities are available adjacent to the site. We've worked through initial layouts with electric sewer and water with city services and also talked to ONG. So those are the, the big pieces of it. The exceptions we're asking for are to the RTM bulk standards with regard to lot area, lot size, and rear yard setbacks. They're all listed on the face of the platte in the lower right-hand corner, exceptions 1 through 4. The ones with the rear setback, typical rear setback in an RTM is 20 feet. In this case, these buildings abut a detention pond, borrow area, part of that mass grading, the, the hole that was dug to pull dirt out of when the whole site was brought up, out of the floodplain or the developable area. So they're backing up to a lot that can never be developed, and that 15 feet will serve also as the electric easement based on discussions with Stillwater Electric. So I'm available to answer any other questions you all might have.
Questions for the applicant? I'm just looking back over your variances letter. Sorry about that. Any additional questions or any questions for the applicant?
I do have a question on one of the, one of the items noted in the report was that the drainage plan was, or the engineering drainage was not submitted, but then there's a reference for drainage analysis. Will that, will that be submitted later? Or is, what is drainage analysis that's shown, is that what's to be accepted as is?
So there was a master drainage study done when the earth-moving process happened and creation of all the associated documents with that. We provided a preliminary drainage letter referencing that document. We've talked to engineering staff who's requested a full version of that study with the submittal of infrastructure improvement plans. So we will, we'll further clarify that with engineering after approval of this preliminary platte and preparation of the improvement plans.
Thank you.
Other question? All right, I'm not seeing any others. Thank, thank you very much. If you have anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the item, please step forward or come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing none, is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for staff alternatives.
So at this point, alternatives available are basically that you can accept findings of staff and approve, and essentially approve the preliminary platte as presented. You can find that the request for the preliminary platte is not adequate or not appropriate and recommend denial. If in, there is a idea that you can improve this with set conditions and you want to, to do so, you can approve the preliminary platte with conditions. You would just need to state what those conditions are, and staff would include that in a letter to the applicant and state what you would also need to state the reasons why you are including those, recommend those conditions and, and what code or part of the comp plan you would be referring those to. If you feel additional information, however, is needed or additional discussion is needed on this item, you may table it to a certain date. With that said, any questions of staff regarding alternatives?
Do not see any. Thank you. Is there any discussion among the commissioners or a motion?
I just want to make a quick comment. The land, obviously, this plan is an appropriate use of the area. I just want it noted in the minutes that I have a concern about the floodplain, especially noting what happened in the spring and summer of 2019.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept findings, recommend approval as presented.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept findings and recommended approval. We will now vote.
Mr. Recaman?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Durham?
Yes.
The motion passes four yes to zero no's. The next item is Craft and Toll Associates Final Platte, SUB 20-15, requesting review and approval for final platte of Fry Farms Phase 1 to create a residential subdivision of 102 residential lots and property currently addressed as 1998 West 32nd Avenue in the residential single-family small lot RSS district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Ryan Harkins, Community Development. So Fry Farms Phase 1 Final Platte is this item before you. The area in question is within the hatch pattern. Again, this is the first phase in the final platte process. The preliminary platte came before you in May 2020 and was approved then. This first phase of development on the final platte stage has 58 single-family lots. You can see the overall area inside the yellow polygon here. Again, this is at southwestern and west 32nd. The area to the north between this development and 26th was the, is the subject site for the Park Valley subdivision. This is street level, looking at this development site. Again, another street level view. This is the proposed Phase 1 development that they are bringing to you tonight. You'll notice 32nd and Western as well as two access points, one off of Western, one off of 32nd. And then additional connections to later phases that are not planted at this time. With that said, do you have questions that staff can answer?
Questions for staff?
Do you have a question of staff? The report states that, at the time the report was developed, that there were requested changes from the preliminary platte that have not been addressed. I'd like to know if, if staff has received a response on, on those requested changes.
We have not seen a complete set of changes, no. One of the things that Kate has come in right before we looked at the adjacent subdivision was the traffic impact analysis. We can tell you after reviewing that, the TIA, the Traffic Impact Analysis, recommended when these subdivisions were at full buildout that a need for a roundabout would need to happen or be constructed at the intersection of 26th and Western. It didn't necessarily talk much about the timing as far as between which phases or who would pay for it, let alone paying for right-of-way. The other information dealt mainly with connections for infrastructure, and some of those questions have not fully been resolved yet, particularly how, for example, you look at a lot of unplatted land between this phase and the lift station that they're connecting to, to the north and the adjacent subdivision. We don't know how they're making those connections, whether it be through an easement that's temporary or other, other means. So things like that have not been resolved completely at this time. The applicant's engineer may have some of those questions that they can, can answer for you, but we don't know that at this point.
So the letter... So the letter that you all sent. To them dated October twenty-second regarding the final plat first review and you list out. You know, in engineering, there's, you know, seven items improvements. Do you feel like these and you were saying that these have not been. Answered and or updated to give you the responses to all those pieces? Is that what you're saying?
We're still working through those, yes.
Working through those listing, okay.
But I do believe. I think at the end of the day, we can get through those, but. And and again, I believe the agent, the engineer for the applicant can answer a lot of those as well.
With that, any other questions of staff? Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and we will now hear from the agent and or the applicant thereof.
Good evening, Brad Reed with Crafton Toll, three hundred point Parkway Boulevard, Yukon, Oklahoma, here on behalf of the applicant. You'd like me to address those, some of those comments, I can go ahead and do that.
Or if you have something you want us, you know, you can tackle it as you will. This is.
Yeah, nothing new if you had to add. I'll go ahead and address the sanitary sewer issue. We're working with SMC Consulting. They're building a lift station and they are going to provide a sanitary sewer connection at our far northeast property line. And so they're gonna, we're working with them on the lift station design and then, like I said, they're gonna have. A sanitary sewer connection for us to tie into, which is how we're gonna. Make that connection to that lift station. As was mentioned, the traffic impact analysis was turned in recently. I did review it and that was the the main issue was the the intersection at twenty-sixth. And then. The other issues that are on there, there's some things like a missed bearing or, you know, some clarification things. You know, removing a UE, there wasn't anything on there that really caused me any concern. So I don't have any issues that I can see with deployment with the final plat with the comments made by staff, so.
Well, I'll just make a comment and then applicant can. Can respond to that comment. I I agree, there are quite a few items here that seem to be. Detail oriented that are just clarifications that can be tidied up moving forward. I think the ones of more concern. That me would be some of the infrastructure concerns. And that would be some of the items and under the heading of water. Some of the items and you address the wastewater. So I I think. Those are are a little bit more concerned to me and in storm storm waters also in here as well. And it just seems like there are a lot of items holding out. Here that could could impact the the plat.
And I'll be honest, I'm the water is not my, I'm not sure exactly how you guys do do your process. I was told to come to a meeting tonight. So, you know, usually we just kind of work with the city along the way, even if we get, you know, planning commission approval, it's. Obviously, under the, it has to be accepted again after it's filed, so we. We can work with them and we don't see any issues with any of the stuff that's on there that's going to change this this plat drastically.
Right, thank you. Appreciate. I appreciate your response.
Any other questions? For the. Well, thank you very much. If something comes up, we'll, you can certainly ask.
Thanks.
We'll all now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor additionally, speak in favor of the item? Seeing none, does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for staff alternatives.
Hey, whoa.
Was there was there somebody, was there someone there just a moment ago?
Yes, there is.
Oh, well, sir. Please, then you wish to speak in favor or in opposition?
How about on the fence? Well, I got comments on it. I mean, I mean, I'm not against the, I'm not against the plat. Roger goes eleven twenty east Connel. There's, I I've read through staff's. I guess it's the review letter. There's a lot of items in here that if they're they're not resolved at this point, there's going to be additional easements. There's going to be maybe easements removed. There's dimensions that are missing and you're being asked to. Approve a final plat that goes forward to the city council. And I I've never seen one come forward with about three or four pages of conditions. Yeah, three and a half pages of conditions. I'm asking staff, the traffic impact analysis. Did it consider? Western and Thirty Second. And full buildout of those streets as the southwest part of this town continues to develop. Is there going to be additional right of way needed? On Western and Thirty Second. Western showing a fifty foot on one side, which that's the obligation, but I don't know. If if that's going to be enough with the turn lanes or whatever's needed. I've also haven't been able to look at a site distance. Diagram which where their their. Twenty-ninth comes out. If you drive out there, there's a pretty good little hill there and I'm not sure because I haven't been able to find the preliminary plat with the topo on it. Whether there's adequate site distance and that should have been, I hope, addressed in the TIA if not. In the improvement plans. But that would be something for Mr. Carnes to look into. There's just a lot of things on this that. I don't think it's complete at this point. That's my comments. Nice subdivision. Hopefully it'll go. Car before the horse. Any questions? There they are. Thank you.
Wait, it looks like Monty, I think I have, I see a hand raised, so yes, sir.
Yes, sir. In regard to the site distances and the traffic impact study. I met with transportation staff earlier in the week. Asked them to get the improvement plans and and check the site distance on on Western. Where those intersections are coming out. So they're they're doing that check in in response to Roger's comment. One of the other comments we had. Was whether or not left turn lanes into. Into the subdivision was needed, center left turn lane, based on the traffic engineering study would ask for additional information on that. So and we do note in the traffic engineering report. A statement that, you know, if the two, if one drive to serve or or one. Entrance to serve most subdivisions would probably be the preferable way to have that designed. I think this is maybe one of the reasons we. We would like to see having traffic impact analysis at the preliminary plat stage. As opposed to the final plat, we raised some of these issues. Early on and and we're told, you know, we'll we'll look at that when we get to TIA. So. We're reviewing those as quickly as we can to try and keep this thing moving along, but. Those would be concerns that we do have.
Thank you, sir, for for speaking up on that on that topic. Since we had you here, that's great. Other, I think that was everyone who was to speak for or against. Am I correct on that? Sorry, I. I don't mean to jump on anybody that way. We'll now close the public hearing and ask for staff alternatives.
Okay, so in terms of alternatives, you can. Accept the findings and recommend approval of the final plat. As presented, you can, if there are specific changes you think. Are necessary to move this item forward. You can recommend approval to city council. With those conditions. If you feel the request to approve the final plat is not appropriate at this time, you can recommend denial. If you feel additional information is needed, additional discussion or other things. Need to be addressed, you can table the item to a date certain. With that said, any questions of staff?
I don't know, perhaps it's rather speculative, but what would be the? Standard practice? In terms of accepting a final plat such as this that has so many open items, so many open issues.
The the standard practice from staff's perspective would be trying to work through those issues before it would go to city council. The improvements according to the land development code. Either have to be at a minimum accepted by the city. So if there's additional easements or things like that, the as part of the the infrastructure that's needed. Those things would have to be addressed and worked through and approved and at least. Approved by the city before we staff would take the item to city council. Where the final plat to be accepted and the improvement plans to be accepted.
Other? Other staff and and other comments for the commissioner from the commissioners or? Questions? Might just note that this, I realize this is part of a larger development thereof. And we've had a number of different pieces come up over the last two or three of our meetings. And each time we've had a different representative or person from your organization. And each one sort of alludes that the next one is that they're there just because the other guy didn't and the next guy and they always come back. And so I I guess I have some. Concerns or if not concern at least. Curious insofar as if there's a lot of open items here in terms of a final plat. That. Sure feel more comfortable if I had some sense of the progress thereof. All I have is a list of. Thirty-seven items or whatever it is. I forget the count at this point. Some of which seem very simple and probably are easy to deal with and others are like. You know, if you don't raise the size of the detention pond, the water runoff is going to come pouring across the street and all of which are. It's just, there's nothing there. So at least I feel a little uncomfortable going going ahead and approving, even though I. I'm pleased to have the development there at this point, so I'm not against it. But I feel a little uncomfortable there.
Mr. Chair, would you be willing to entertain a motion?
Of course.
All right, I move that additional information be presented before we make a decision. I would ask that that additional information be. In the form of the response to the staff letter with the requested questions and information answered. And I I know we need to set a date for that. So I would look for a nod from the from the applicant to know if if two weeks is appropriate or if if it's the December first. Date. It looks like a lot of work to tidy up.
I don't think your staff would have time to review with that, so what a month would be better.
All right, I'd like to. To move to table this until the December first. Meeting.
Do we have a sec?
I second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we table this to date certain the the December first Planning Commission meeting. To provide the additional information in response or. Answers to the staff letter. We will now. Vote.
Mr. Rickelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Durham?
Yes.
The motion passes for yes, zero, no. The next item on the agenda is a meeting summary for review and possible action, the regular meeting summary of the October twentieth, twenty twenty Planning Commission meeting. We have a motion to approve or changes, any changes. Vicky, I think you're still on mute.
I move that we approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the summary of the regular meeting summary of October twentieth. We will now vote.
Mr. Rickelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Durham?
Yes.
The motion passes for yes to zero no's. Miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, or city attorney in discussion of possible action. Next planning commission meeting, November seventeenth, twenty twenty. We have a motion to adjourn.
I move.
A second.
Moved and seconded that we adjourn. Now vote.
Mr. Rickelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Durham?
Yes.
The motion passes for yes to no, no. Thank you all for all your work this evening.